I called the meeting of the Towne Pearson Planning Commission meeting to order. It is, today is Tuesday, September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four, and at five P M. Yvonne, our town clerk, would you have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir. Chairman Paul Martel.
Yes, ma'am.
Vice Chairman Blair Davis.
Here.
Commissioner Jonathan Vickers.
Here.
Commissioner Jeff Aaron.
Here.
Town Planner Mark Corret.
Here.
And we are both here.
Thank you, thank you. At that, at this time, I will ask our Commissioner Jonathan Vickers to say a prayer.
All right, let us pray. Father, we thank you for having this privilege of serving our Towne Pearson. I pray, Father, that as we discuss our agenda for our city, we will always put the citizens' interests above our own. Remind us, Father, that we are in this position not to serve, not to be served, but to be, but to serve the public, just as Christ, who is King of kings, came not to be served, but to serve, and ultimately died on our cross to save us. I also pray, Father, that we will uphold what is moral and rational. We say all of this in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Amen.
Please rise and face the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. We don't have minutes from the last meeting?
They're not in here. We have minutes, they're not in here.
No, they're not. Okay. I would request the commissioners to allow the postponement of the minutes of the previous meeting for obvious reasons. I would entertain a motion.
I move to postpone the reading of the minutes and reading and approval of minutes until next meeting.
Second. Second. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, ayes have it. Okay. Um, next on the agenda. Oh, I know. Well, I'll turn this over. It's a F R D A P grant presentation. Deputy Clerk Ryan Smith, you have the floor.
Thank you. Firdap grants. We applied for Firdap grants a couple of years ago for, we got a piece of playground equipment we want at Chipper Jones Park, and then we got another piece of equipment at Palmetto Park up at Palmetto Avenue. The grant cycles opened again. Yvonne and I have received a lot of complaints about the condition of the playground overall. At Chipper Jones Park, a lot of the equipment rusting, potentially dangerous for kids. Notably, not a lot of ADA compliant equipment up there, which is a big thing now. You know, a lot of cities are facing lawsuits and stuff for not having ADA compliant facilities and parks and whatnot. So I spoke with our grant writer. Towne Pearson is kind of unique that we're a ready designated city. Ready designation just basically means that you're a rural city that meets several criteria, including population under twenty-five thousand, agriculture as your main source of income in the town, your median housing is below the national level, your median income is below the national level. So Pearson meets all these criteria. So if you are a ready designated city, it will actually allow you to apply for the full grant amount, which is two hundred thousand dollars, and it allows you to waive a match requirement. So last time we did this, Pearson only applied for a fifty thousand dollar grant because up to fifty thousand, there was no match requirement. But then as it goes up, you apply somewhere between fifty and a hundred, you have to match twenty-five percent. And then you got to match fifty, and then all the way up to the two hundred percent mark, I think you have to match like seventy-five percent of it or something. So, um, after speaking to the grant writer and after talking to the council on workshop, we just decided that we would try to apply for two hundred thousand dollars with a match waiver. And we're going to call this Chipper Jones Park Phase Two because the first grant, we bought a single piece of playground equipment because a piece of playground equipment is about fifty grand. But what we'd like to do is we would like to apply for this, do some more upgrades at the park, and also hopefully renovate the bathrooms. I don't know if anyone's been to our park bathrooms, they're awful. They're dark, they're dirty. A lot of parents complaining, a lot of parents send their kids down and use the ones at the concession stand where the Little League is. So that's kind of the plan for now. Unfortunately, two hundred thousand dollars doesn't go very far. Sounds like a decent amount of money, but we're gonna, we're gonna take it as far as we can. Restroom facilities, support facilities, they can't be more than fifty percent of the grant. So in other words, we can't spend more than about, you know, ninety-five, ninety-eight thousand dollars on bathrooms. The rest would have to be on actual structures for the park. There is the potential to, I spoke with Volusia County, Volusia County has the ECHO grant program. And I should just back up a little bit and say Firdap is the Florida Recreation Development Assistance Program. So that is for the either procurement or development of public land with the intent to have an outdoor recreation area, right? Volusia County ECHO is very similar. Their projects are either environmental in nature, they're historical in nature, they're cultural, but they also focus a lot on recreation. So Volusia County ECHO has been in existence for twenty-three years. They give a ton of money away every year to municipalities within Volusia County. Pearson has never applied. The thing with an ECHO grant is you do have to put up a fifty percent match, but there's all these different things. It could be unencumbered cash, it could be in-kind donations. You can even match it with any funds that you've spent toward that project within the last seven years. So with that being said, what we'd like to do, if possible, is apply for this two hundred thousand dollar Firdap grant. We won't get an answer until July, when the state releases its budget for next year. If we get selected and we get funded for the two hundred thousand, I would like to then in September, apply for an ECHO grant for two hundred thousand and use the two hundred thousand for Firdap as a match, which I spoke to ECHO and I can do that. So you'd essentially double your money, four hundred thousand dollars, and it wouldn't cost the town anything. And hopefully with four hundred thousand dollars, you could almost maybe get that park done. So anyway, what's before you tonight? There's a whole process to apply for this. There's all these things that have to take place. I had to hold a public meeting here, get feedback from the community. I had to present this to a local nonprofit. I gave a presentation to the Pearson Saddle Club, who uses Chipper Jones Park a lot. I'm, I have to bring it before planning and zoning. You guys have to discuss it, ask any questions. And then if you look at the bottom of the page I supplied in bold, you'd basically have to make a two-part motion, one saying that you recommend this to the council for approval, and then the council would essentially have to do a resolution that says, upon funding of the grant, we have to add this to our capital improvement section of our five-year plan, which Mark may want to speak a little bit about that because I guess technically Pearson has one.
Has not been updated.
Or we should have one.
You should update it every year. Carmen was updating it sort of intermittently.
Right.
Uh, so there is a capital improvement component to the comp plan, which also is like a budgeting portion of, it's basically what you're going to spend on capital improvements. So, you know, something like this would need to be, you know, being a two hundred fifty thousand dollar item, would need to be in that plan.
Right. And the state's requirement basically says, if it's not already in there, upon being noticed that you've been funded, you can, as long as you've passed a resolution saying, okay, once we receive the funds, we will add it in that amount to our capital improvement plan, they'll accept that.
So that's your second?
Yes, I'm pretty sure that's what I have written in there. I don't actually have a copy of the one that I gave you guys. But basically, you're referring it to the council. You know, if that is something that you guys would like to pursue. I mean, personally, I'm advocating for it just because we, like I said, Pearson has not really gone after grants very aggressively, and we hear complaints from residents and citizens all the time about wishing facilities were better, wishing they had more. This is an opportunity for us to do that without really spending any town funds, which we're always very tight in our budget on what we can and can't do with town money. So it's available and it's out there and our tax dollars pay for it. So I, you know, why wouldn't we try to bring some of that back to the community? But if you have any questions about it, I've been looking into Firdap and ECHO stuff since March, so.
I'm gonna assume by the time you get to applying for ECHO, you're gonna have to have a fairly specific plan as to what this all will look like.
Right, so.
These are the pieces of parts we want to buy.
Right, so the state, to actually apply, your application basically just says, here's the piece of land, we own it. These are all the items that we would like to either renovate or construct. And then you give them a dollar amount that you have in mind and you submit that. Once you actually receive approval from the state and you've actually got the grant funding, then you have a, a time period where you have to start giving them specifics. Okay, we reached out and we got vendor quotes and the procurement stage of it, right? And Firdap is actually a reimbursement grant. So in other words, Pearson's going to pay funds that they have in reserves to construct all this or renovate all this, and then you apply for reimbursement from Firdap. And they'll tell you like, yes, that meets the criteria, or no, it doesn't. Or the reason I would bring up the bathroom thing, for instance, is that knowing that criteria in the beginning keeps us from making a mistake and spending money that we're not going to get reimbursed for. But that's also one of the reasons that I've been working with Fred Fox, our grant writer, because they know, you know, what we can and can't get reimbursed for. But when I do take it to ECHO, ECHO wants the entire plan. They want drawings, they want pricing, they want, they, you, ECHO comes to you and you have to do an entire ten-minute presentation showing them, here's what we're doing, here's how we plan to do it. So by the time we get to that point, yes, we'll have to have specifics nailed down.
Are there any questions from the commissioners?
Yeah, I had a couple of different citizens in our town over the last couple of years asking if we're ever going to maybe get an outdoor recreational pool. Now, is there any thoughts on that, or is that just way out? Is that just?
I mean, I'll just give you an example, which is, is being mismanaged grossly. But I live in Palm Coast, and in Palm Coast, they're trying to build a splash pad, which a couple of parents have asked for here. Palm Coast has spent about seven million dollars trying to construct the splash pad. It's money that Pearson, I mean, I'm not saying there aren't grants available for that kind of thing. People mentioned pickleball courts to us and stuff like that, which may be a little bit more in the realm of possibility, but you wouldn't believe, or you might be able to believe, the amount of money that these things cost, especially when you're a municipality and people hear it's a government contract, you know? So in the future, I mean, what we'd like to see happen is we'd like to see Pearson go after these things pretty regularly, whether that be for renovations, whether it be for construction of new stuff. In some instances, you can get multiple grants from different sources and combine them or use them as matching funds for other grants. So I mean, the possibilities are out there. This one was kind of a last-minute thing because they closed in September, and I really couldn't get the council, I couldn't nail them down on answer about whether or not I was supposed to be doing this. So we just made the executive decision to try it. I mean, it's, it's a benefit to the town, I mean, yeah.
Coaches to you. Thank you.
So, but yeah, to answer your question, it's, it's entirely possible to do other recreational outdoor stuff in the future. We have multiple parks, and in theory, you can actually apply for three Firdap grants in one cycle, which is what they did last time, they applied for two separate ones.
If we can do pickleball, I'm telling you, it's gonna get some people to be active in this.
We've had a few citizens ask, someone came to the council meeting a few months ago and asked for their ball, so.
You could actually just, the tennis courts that are over there, you could make that.
Someone say, someone said you could line them for both.
You did a chuck line.
Yeah, that's what I heard. That park unfortunately though is almost never open because it's so low.
Yeah.
It's constantly wet, so that's part of the problem. And part of the reason, you know, like I said, we technically could have applied for a second Firdap grant, but then we were so close to the end of the cycle, and each Firdap grant has to have its own public meeting, its own planning and zoning meeting. It would have been double the work in three weeks or whatever, so. But that is entirely possible in the future. But our problem is that, you know, Pearson, we got the last Firdap grant, and it was four years from the time they got it until we closed it out. They just sat on it for a long time. We need to get better at, like, once you're awarded, spend the money, get reimbursed, close it out, and then when the next cycle opens, you can apply again. So that's the plan, but we're gonna see how far we get with this one.
Are there any other questions?
What's the, what's the time? When do you need to have this to the state?
They're submitting it Friday. I've collected all the other info. All I have left is I have to do minutes for this tomorrow. I'll have to get Paul to sign them at some point. And a resolution from the council, which if you make this motion tonight, I'll take that to the council at six-thirty. And then it'll all get scanned tomorrow, and the grant writer will submit it by Friday.
Okay, so you want the motion to follow this little paragraph there at the bottom?
Or something similar to that, correct?
Any other questions?
Yes, I do.
Just a quick.
Go ahead, Jeff, go ahead.
Let Jeff.
Going back to the, using the two hundred thousand to match the county grant, and you said it's a reimbursement grant, how's, how exactly is that gonna work?
So ECHO requires what they call unencumbered funds, which means it's just town money that's free and clear, there's no loans attached to it. So because, because Firdap is a reimbursement grant, technically, the town is fronting two hundred thousand dollars. So Volusia County looks at that as it's our two hundred thousand dollars. They will allow us to use that to match their funds, to do four hundred thousand dollars with. After the completion of the renovations, whether or not I apply for reimbursement from another state agency, they don't care.
Okay.
Just as long as that money was Pearson's and it was unencumbered and it was just cash in our account, you know, that was free and clear money that we're allowed to use. And we're also allowed to use, like I mentioned, we added it up. We've done forty-five thousand dollars in repairs over the last five years, so lights, to electric, to all kinds of stuff up there. That can also be used as matching funds for Volusia County. So you may actually even be able to ask them for more than two hundred thousand dollars. I would just have to sit down and add up all the expenditures for there for the past seven years and see how far we got with it.
Okay.
But, yeah, I was confused about that one too because ECHO is very, very specific about what funding you can and can't use, but I, they gave me some clarification on that the other day.
Blair?
With, uh, with that two hundred thousand, though, we have to match fifty percent, so we have to front a hundred thousand?
No, you have to front the whole thing.
They front a full two hundred.
You have to front the full two hundred, and then once the, once you've done all your construction, you apply for all of that back as reimbursement from Firdap.
So we front two hundred. They give us that two hundred back. And then how does that apply to the ECHO?
So ECHO will give you two hundred as well, as long as you have matching funds for that, right? So the two hundred thousand dollars that's in Pearson's account right now will be the, the one we're going to spend on the actual park renovations. Volusia County looks at that as, okay, well, Pearson's got two hundred thousand they're gonna spend, we're gonna give them two hundred thousand more.
Okay, and then we would pay that back with.
Then we pay that back from Firdap. So essentially, you get two hundred from Volusia and then two hundred reimbursement. Now that's, that's a lot of ifs because you gotta get selected by Volusia County first. But the nice thing about the ECHO program, unlike the Firdap program, is you write your application, you send it to the ECHO committee, and they'll basically hold your hand through it. You know, like Seville V I A, that's how they, that's how they were able to buy that building two years ago, and that's how they just got another grant to renovate a bunch of it. But I talked to Jana Register, and she said, you know, we did all of it ourselves, and we submitted it to Volusia County, and they would say, hey, you know, maybe you should clarify this here, or maybe include this. So they, they basically walked her through the whole thing. So.
Do we have two hundred thousand dollars just to throw at this?
Yes, we do. A lot of it right now is in CDs. Just the council made a motion a few weeks ago to put it in CDs just to make some money on it while it's sitting there. But yes, there is, there's quite a bit right now in reserves.
There was an emergency that popped up, and we, we did all this as you speak on. And that two, two hundred thousand dollars that's in CDs, and we needed it, we can't touch it.
We can, you would just get penalized for it.
On the other end.
Right.
I got you. Fair enough. That's fair. It's an emergency.
All right, so here's my last question. And I, now, I'm all, I'm all for making that park better. I mean, we need access for wheelchairs, I still don't think we can do that. Are we able to unload kitchen wheelchairs yet? I don't think the parking area can handle that yet. It's still pretty soft, right?
I mean, the parking up there, even behind the park, is, there's really no safe parking up there.
In the scheme of things, four hundred thousand dollars to get that essentially paved or hard-milling's, commercial plumbing for the bathrooms, which that needs to be.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Bad shape.
Is four hundred our max? Because I'm, I'm really worried about, if we do this, will we even have enough to even get halfway through it?
Probably not, to be honest with you. The max you can apply for in one.
Cycle.
Cycle for Firdap is two hundred thousand dollars. So you could technically try to go for more ECHO, but then you have to have more match with ECHO. So then Pearson would be fronting, I mean, we would be.
You can apply for these every year.
Right.
Okay, so we could, so as long as we don't sit on it.
Right, that was.
This can be a.
That was the problem with the last time, is that for four years, they got the money and then for three years did nothing. And then when they found out that the grant cycle was gonna close and they were gonna lose their opportunity to get reimbursement, then they scrambled, well, I scrambled, we needed it. This got thrown into our lap, we had no idea that this was even a thing because we had just started.
So they spent all the money, got the equipment, and then never asked for it back.
And they also didn't follow, and we also didn't get all of it back, that's the other thing. We didn't get all of it back because they missed certain things that the application very clearly spelled out that they had to do. There were holes in the fence that they inspect, because it will be inspected, I mean, the state, D E B.
Oh, yeah, 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 right.
Take pictures and make sure she spent the money.
They really did, you're not stealing anybody's money.
But they came out and were like, you know, why is there holes in the fence? And why isn't this secured? And so we got dinged on because someone didn't follow the checklist. So that's the other side of it, is that once you, we have to take it very seriously so that once we have a plan and we have quotes and a price, that you hit the ground running and you try to do it as fast as you can and apply for reimbursement and close that out.
Right.
So that next time the cycle comes up and, you'll see people do this in other towns. You'll see people like, for like water projects and wastewater projects, you'll see phase one, phase two, phase three. Part of the reason that we're doing this as phase two is because Firdap has stuff that says, well, you can't use the same money to do the same park over and over again. Well, technically, we're not. We're doing another portion of the park that we didn't touch last time, right? So maybe next year you do phase three and you try to go for something else.
Right.
You know? Chipper Jones Park is technically a huge complex. I mean, it encompasses the rodeo grounds, eight-ball fields, the playground, all of that, you know? So you're never gonna be able to do it in one or two grant cycles.
I'm typically against spending money, but I'm, I'm, I think I'm okay with this.
Are there any other questions? Okay. Well then, I would entertain a motion.
One second.
Yeah, go ahead.
Clarification on how you need this stated.
Right here.
And that bolded.
Just say that. Okay? And they're gonna reword it so it sounds correct for the grants.
You need the two-part motion, right?
That's correct, two parts, right.
I move to, I move to make a, I move to make a.
Can I say, I will entertain a motion?
I thought you did already.
Oh, thank you. Go ahead.
Did you?
No.
Oh, well, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, 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 no. I, I moved to, I moved for the Towne Pearson to make a, a, a Firdap grant application for the Chipper Jones Park Phase Two in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars. And I second that.
Seconded by Jonathan Vickers. Are there any questions on the motion? On? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Jeff Aaron.
Here.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. Yes.
Vice Chairman Blair Davis.
Yes.
Chairman Paul Martel.
Yes. So it's unanimous. Now, I will entertain a motion on the second part of this grant.
I move that, uh, that the town council, I, I move as the planning commission to recommend to the town council to revise the town's capital improvement element of the comprehensive plan to include the proposed for that grant project.
Second.
I hear a second from Jeff. Are there any questions on the motion? If you would, town clerk, roll call.
Commissioner Jeff Aaron.
Yes.
Commissioner Jonathan.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Leonard Davis.
Yes.
Chairman Paul Martel.
Yes. The ayes have it. Ryan, the ball's in your court now.
That was it?
Can you talk to the, uh?
Yeah, now I gotta go through the council.
Okay.
Question.
Question pertaining to this. You need me to sign something?
I'll have to do minutes tomorrow morning, and then I'll have to get you to sign the minutes because I have to submit that.
All right, I'll come in tomorrow. No specific times?
I mean, if you can come around lunch or something, that would be great.
Don't close to it.
Okay.
Okay. All right.
We have a meeting in the morning, so that's why I was saying.
So you're all set, Ryan?
Yep.
You're good, all right, thank you. All right, next we go to the, um, the L D C updates. Article eight, section eight point three, tree protection. And I will turn this over to our town planner, Mark Lake Corret.
Thank you. So we have in front of you, you have staff report, you have the existing land development code with strike-through and underline, mainly underlined because we're adding language to the land development code. And also included in your packet is the county's minimum standard. So as explained in the staff report, back in the late eighties, early nineties, you may or may not recall that a charter commission was established and granted, you know, it was a charter approval that gave the county the ability to adopt the minimum standards for environmental protection. There are a number that they established for things like stormwater and wetlands, and one of them is tree protection. And so those minimum standards were, were, were passed, and all the cities were supposed to have adopted ordinances that met those minimum standards. Towne Pearson did adopt some changes to its land development code that addressed much of the stuff that was in the minimum standards. So we now fast forward to a couple of years ago, that committee that was established called, it's called N R A C, which stands for the Environmental Natural Resources Advisory Committee that was active in the creation of these minimum standards, have been dormant for a couple of decades, till a couple of years ago. That committee has been reestablished by the county, and they are basically looking at environmental standards for the county. Mainly, they have been focused on making changes to the county's own land development code. But as part of this process, they started inquiring with all the jurisdictions to find out what the current status of their, their various tree protection ordinances were compared to the minimum standards that got adopted. And so they sent questionnaires out to all the cities. And so they sent, uh, questionnaires out to all the cities. Uh, Ryan was the one who got tasked at looking at this, uh, for the town of Pearson. Uh, and, uh, he was unable to, uh, answer all those questions, uh, because certain elements of the minimum standards never got adopted into the town's, uh, land development code. So, uh, I, I guess basically put this is, is that, uh, Ryan responded the best he could in regards to those items and was more or less silent on, on those items, uh, that, uh, don't meet minimum standards. Uh, we don't know what or if the county is going to do anything in regards to this. But obviously they know that we, uh, only we're, we're partially responsive to their questions. And so we are now trying to get out ahead of, you know, whatever the county may be thinking. The county has the ability to, uh, really their only punishment would be is that they can enforce them themselves, right? So essentially, a- and we want to avoid that. It would make it difficult or cumbersome for anybody who was building or putting up a house, doing commercial projects. Essentially the, the process involved will not only have to deal with us, but you have to go down to the county and have, you know, go through county processes. So we do, uh, want to make sure that we avoid that. So that's what you have in, uh, front of you, uh, tonight. And so I'll just skip past the staff report uh, to the text that's in front of you. And so you can see resource protection, giving you kind of that entire section of land development code, but in your staff reports. In this section, we're really not changing until we get to, uh, the tree protection. Section eight point three. Well, as you'll see, it should be in red. Sorry, it doesn't have page number. So we're in section eight point three and essentially what we've done is gone looked at that minimum standard and anything that was not in it, we have, uh, shown in this document as proposed. So we're updating, uh, the spirit of intent of the section. I'm not going to read that or data to you, but you can see that. Uh, but I will talk about the things that are actual standards. So under, uh, removal of the tree, uh, eight, eight point three point three talks about how it is unlawful to, uh, remove trees. But we didn't have an actual explanation as to, uh, what, uh, constitutes a tree that matched what was in, uh, the minimum standard. But essentially, basically what's going to get regulated will be, uh, a definition of tree becomes something that's basically, uh, six inches in diameter, measured, uh, at breast height, fifteen feet height. Eight point three point four exemptions, uh, under B. We've added a language that talks, again, this, you know, adds in a definition. Part of the questions, the county step is asking is, you know, what is your definition of tree? Wait, you know? All those things. So we, we were not able to, uh, provide the answer that met, uh, minimum standards. So beefed up with the definition of your, to a tree is to match the minimum standard. Uh, go down to eight point three point five A. Supplemented language to, you know, match the minimum standard as to how the tree protection application will be included in the application, uh, in its approval process. Uh, so these are just elements that we're missing from how we did it. This is more procedural component, but I'm not going to go into great detail of it. This is an area, so I'm now moving down to eight point three six. We had language in there that referenced what specimen trees were. However, we didn't have a list of specimen trees and the minimum standard had a very specific list of trees and diameters. And so that's what you're seeing, uh, in the, uh, eight point three six. And so just give you a little bit more context, there's basically two types of, uh, regulated trees within the minimum standards versus historic trees, which are a certain number of, uh, primarily we're looking at oaks, we'll see this later, but they're thirty-six inches in diameter or greater. And then there's specimen trees. So his historic trees, you know, receive a greater level of protection. Uh, then specimen trees, historic trees are only supposed to be, uh, taken out at all ways. And they wanted to be the highest elected body in the jurisdiction. So basically the town council, if you want to remove the historic tree, you have to go to the town council and specifically ask them to remove that tree. The way specimen trees work is you have to maintain a certain number of them on your property. So what eight point three six is doing, this is identifying those trees and later on we'll see. Uh, and, uh, the second portion of the table, how much, how many of these trees you have to maintain, uh, per size of the property. So you can see the first part of the list, uh, each of the trees and they vary about the type of the trees. So, uh, most of them are twelve or eighteen inches. And then we get, uh, on the next page, the number of specimen trees that are projected. So, uh, smaller your property, uh, the greater percentage of the specimen trees that you, uh, have to maintain assume, because it's assumed that there'll be a greater number on a larger piece of property. So that's what this next portion of the table is talking about, the number of specimen trees. Minimum specimen tree protection requirement again. So you can see if you're less than three acres, you've got to maintain eighty percent of all specimen trees. That's what we had in our existing ordinance. But then we didn't follow these, the, uh, standard for was just left out of the ordinance. So, and you can see that it increment, it, it goes in increments from three to five acres uh, all the way up to, uh, eight point one. And, uh, goes from sixty-five percent with the three to five. Basically to, if you're greater than, you have eight point one acres, you're maintaining four specimen trees per acre. This next portion, uh, just, uh, talks about how the tree survey uh, is being put together and, uh, how it will be identified. So this is the procedural aspects of, uh, that survey. The second portion of this talks about the historic trees and, uh, again, how this goes to, uh, the town council. Also talks about champion trees, which would be very rare. This would be trees that are on a statewide list that are among the largest in the state. So you don't really deal with, uh, champion trees on a regular basis. But there are a significant number of trees that are thirty-six inch oaks that are larger that will have to go to the town council for approval. Next, flip over to, uh, eight, three eleven, tree survival. There's just languages being added, uh, that clarifies, uh, where we'll get direction from. In the event of questions about uh, conditions to tree and tree survival, so just going to the division of forestry. Anyway, on eight point three point fifteen penalties. See that we had some of the language from the minimum standard related penalties. But, uh, so that A portion was already in the land development code. But B portion that talks about, shall be far replaced all affected trees unless the property owner can demonstrate replanting one of those. So we didn't have this language in there about replanting. So the way that our current code talked about it is, you know, you, you'd be a penalty, but you weren't necessarily having to, uh, replant. And so that is that last portion of the code. So just, you know, want to make sure you understand that this is, uh, this all applies to, uh, land development, so applies to residential development, applies to residential development. These are not going to apply to, you know, there are ag exemptions associated with, uh, tree clearing. So this really, you know, doesn't affect, you know, anybody's, you know, agricultural use of property or how agricultural uses will take down trees, uh, is affects land development.
So this is basically is for, if a developer comes in.
For developer, it does affect single family homes, you know? For example, you know, we do, if you recall, uh, we had rezoning a couple of months ago and some, uh, trees were taken down without going through the process. Now, 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 most of those trees that were taken down were, were, were pine. But, you know, if, if some of those were, uh, historic trees, uh, it was after the fact, so it makes it very hard to really tell. It's, it's used to be back in the bottle. But yes, they, you know, some of this would have, you know, would have applied. So it does apply to single family homes as well.
If John Q's citizen owns his property, pays taxes and he has a tree on it. He, he just a redwood slop like all of us. That really doesn't pertain to him. When I say it doesn't pertain to him, he, he's not a developer. If he's got a tree that's.
Own occupied property? No, it doesn't.
That's what I, that's what I want. Yeah, I wanted this.
You can destroy your backyard and.
Well, I would never cut down on an oak tree.
And you want to take it down, you can, this, this does affect. Say you bought a piece of property and it's one acre.
Yep.
And you want to put your home on it.
Yep.
You gotta jump through all these hoops.
Right. Oh, okay.
If you're already on it though.
If you're already on it.
What?
No, is, is where the exemption A comes into play. You can, you can have fair game, right? Now, let, now if it's agriculture, you can still complete, complete, complete clear, correct? Or do you have to fall under this?
You can complete, no, no, you complete clear for, if you're doing, you know, it's modified agriculture, right?
If you're a forenery, in other words, yeah. And you put in an expansion on your, you can do it.
Right.
Okay. That's just one, that was basically what I wanted.
So I have, I have a question though, and it's just seemed a little high. So for parcels that are three to five acres, they have to, they have to maintain sixty-five percent of their tree space, species?
Of the specimen trees.
Of the specimen trees, okay.
Oh.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Jump.
Jumping though, right.
So this is basically watching out to make sure, especially an old oak, live oak tree's been sitting there for two hundred years. And a developer wants to expand a property and put something on it. We're not going to allow him to cut that tree down. It's basically where it boils down to.
Correct. Those historic trees, they'll have to, you know, if there is very large oak, they'll have to go to the, you know, even though.
Right.
You know, you, you go through a site plan process, they'll have to have specific permission from the town council to take down.
Okay.
You know, really big oak.
So not much common sense, basically.
It, it's basically common sense. I mean, some of this, you know, this idea of the bringing specimen trees a certain percentage. The whole point is that the, that a certain amount of the tree canopy gets maintained. The, the, basically the rules for land development, you have to devote about fifteen percent of your property to tree protection. We would look to, you know, hopefully, you know, if you're a land developer, you're specimen trees. You, you can basically within that fifteen percent, you'll hopefully have enough specimen trees to meet these percentages. But if you don't, you would, you have to replant. Now, there's landscaping requirements anyway, so you'd sort of make those up.
Yep.
So if you're doing commercial development, there are, there, there can, depending upon the size of your property and the distribution, there, this can have a significant effect, particularly on smaller commercial, uh, development.
Just. Just, just to clarify, so the, the percent that has to be left is this relates to new construction, right? New.
New.
Nuclear, new.
New construction.
Okay.
Okay, so commercially, we're going to look for them to specifically identify where they've devoted fifteen percent of their land.
Right.
To tree protection.
Right.
Single family home, we're going to look like, we're going to look for you to, uh, basically have one tree per twenty-five hundred square feet of land. We're not going to say, here's, you know, show us where your, your fifteen percent said five tree per section. We're just going to show us that it, you know, we're going to take the, the side of your property divided by twenty-five hundred square feet and you tell us where you have.
Right.
One tree per twenty-five.
Okay.
Hundred square feet. And hopefully you've saved that. You haven't cleared.
Yes.
Like Chad, where he's going to have to give us back seventeen trees. But where it would come to play specifically is if you had a big old historic tree on that, then we're going to say, you know, in addition to those, you know, twenty-five hundred square feet, gotta go to the town council and say, you want to knock down that.
Right.
You know.
You better have a damn good reason.
Now, here's, here's my last question, Mark. Once there's a house on that property and it's built, are they now exempt, exemption A? Can, do they now have access to push?
Yeah, they could take it down afterwards.
Without, without following that sixty-five percent, without sticking to the sixty-five percent of the tree species?
Once you're unoccupied, you know, once you're on it, you're. The whole point of this is trying to get them to look at where they're going to put the house. You know, and avoid, I mean, I, I've only had a few occasions where somebody really like could avoid a tree, but doesn't want to. And the fact that they gotta go to the town council, okay, I'll avoid the tree.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You know?
Sure. That's all I've got.
Okay, Jonathan, Jeff. Has anybody have anything to say on this matter? Okay, um, at this time, I would entertain a motion that the, um, that we wholeheartedly support this and send it up to the town council with our authorization. Who would like to make the motion?
I will make a motion. I move to accept the changes to the tree. As posted.
I'll second that.
Jonathan seconded it. Are there any other questions or statements to be made before we vote? You're in, not seeing none. If you would, please have a roll call.
Commissioner Jeff Yaren.
Yes.
Commissioner Jonathan Vickers?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Blair Davis?
Yes.
Chairman Paul Martel.
Yes. And for the record, it's unanimous vote and it's passed. Is there any other business to be brought before the planning commission? Well, first, uh, is there any old business?
No.
Alright, so with that said, um, I would, uh, All right, so with that said, um, I would, um, I call this meeting. Oh, our next planning commission meeting is November nineteen, twenty twenty-four. And is, is that going back to six now? Are we doing six o'clock or are we going to do five o'clock?
No, this was just special because.
Yeah, because of.
Regular hours.
Six o'clock. So you're clear.
Good.
Okay, at this time, I would call the meeting adjourned. And I thank you very much for participating for our town. Thank you.